Lynn's always late. I'll call a meeting to order. Seated tonight is myself, David Restman, Gardner Young, Fred Dykman, Ben Filbert, your regular members, and alternate Charles Sheehan. Minutes.
Make the motion, approve the minutes as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Very well done, considering all the obstacles, I'm sure.
Yeah. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? Ayes have it. Keith.
Sure. First up, we have the administrative review items. First, the virtual meeting protocol, just so people out there can mute themselves either on their computers or on their phones while they're not talking, just to prevent any sort of weird feedback issues. That would be good, and if you could just unmute yourself when you do talk, and if people can state their names before they speak, to make it easier for everyone to know who's talking and for the minutes. For the administrative review items, item 4D1 is consideration of extension of temporary policy regarding zoning enforcement and permitting during the COVID-19 pandemic. The proposal is to extend to November 1st, 2020. Back in May, the commission approved this temporary policy, which provides relief from certain types of zoning enforcement during the COVID-19 pandemic. It allows outdoor seating, retail displays, and signage that might not otherwise meet the regulations or need permitting that would otherwise take too long to go through that process. Right after the commission approved that, the Governor's Executive Order 7MM offered much of the same relief. And several businesses in town have used these policies to have outdoor seating and parking lots and things like that, which has really helped here. And there really hasn't been complaints of negative impacts because of these things. The commission's temporary policy is due to expire on September 7th. The first amendment has requested that the commission extend this policy to November 1st as businesses continue to struggle with these issues. The state's order is due to expire in September also, making this especially needed at the local level, although businesses and towns around the state are trying to get the state to extend their order further out also. And the draft of the modified policy here is in the report, and really the only change is the date, making it to November 1st, 2020.
Any discussion?
Yes, this is Ben Filbert. Why wouldn't we just go to the end of the year?
Oh, we could. You know, a lot of it deals with outdoor seating, so the assumption was, you know, after November 1st, there wouldn't be that much of a need for it, but, I mean, in my opinion, going to the end of the year wouldn't be a bad thing because things don't look like they're really cleaning up health-wise.
I guess I would make a motion, we go to the end of 2020, make it simpler, until January 1st.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All of them in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Lynn, you're welcome. Lynn, time to wait to join the meeting.
I joined the meeting, and just for the record, I am not able to get on the WebEx. It keeps on saying "joining meeting," but it hasn't come through, so I just am on the phone.
Item here is item 4D2, 2179ZON, Garberino and Garberino Enterprises. This is zoning permit application for placement of an outdoor 12 by 10 removable cooler and two propane tanks at 30-32 Williams Ave Mystic, assessor's map 161 block 16, lot 2, zone LS5. This is an outdoor cooler for a new takeout pizza shop and bakery, what we call a retail restaurant. At this location, it's at the site of the current Mystic Soup Company. It'll be behind the building. We sent this to the town's floodplain management consultant, who indicated general conformance with the flood hazard requirements, with the additional details needed at the building permit stage, just regarding the exact construction of the cooler. The rear property line's been relocated in the southwest to accommodate the cooler, to make room to meet the rear setback. So with that, it conforms to the bulk of these requirements of the LS5 district. So we just have a recommended stipulation that construction shall conform to all relevant flood hazard requirements.
Does that include those propane tanks, how they can secure them?
It does, and those would have to be properly tied down.
Keith, are those two lots are owned by the same people? So you're going to adjust the property line, it will?
Right, right.
This is Lynn. I'm just a little confused on this one because the application has a picture, and it's the old location of Mystic Soup Company, but that's not the current location.
That's right. They've gone to Cotrell Street, but that was the last use of that space.
Okay, so is the application... I just want to make sure that the application is correct because, again, that's not what this says.
Keith, may I add something? This is Julia Leamy. I'm the architect on the project. The space was formerly Mystic Soup Company, but it is now being renovated into a bakery and pizzeria by the 85th Day Food Community, Dan Mizer's organization, Grass and Bone Engine Room, Oyster Club. So it's the former Mystic Soup Company space, which was vacated by Mystic Soup Company, became available, and Dan Mizer is leasing it now and building a pizzeria and bakery within the space.
Thanks for that explanation. So it's just consistency. Is there anything on the formal application, and I'm looking at it again, that refers to the site of Mystic Soup Company? Or Keith, did you just say that in your summary? Because I'm not seeing that in the formal application.
No, I don't think the former location, excuse me, I don't think the application mentions Mystic Soup Company, but it definitely mentions that as 30-32 Williams. So I just sang that for reference.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that it was consistent. So good. Thank you.
Any other questions at this time? Do I have a motion on the top of page?
Don't move.
Second.
It's with the stipulations of the Gilling codes, correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
All of them in favor?
Aye.
Both? Ayes have it.
Dave, do you have me? Lynn's... You know...
Lynn is seated now, and Chuck is no longer seated.
Okay, well, it wasn't... After she joined, you didn't see...
Thank you.
Just to point a border, I mean, she's seated, I have a problem with that. She wasn't, you know, you didn't change the seat.
Well, item 4D, Attorney Ted Ladwig, request for interpretation of zoning regulation 7.1.1, accessory dwelling units, specifically structure, total area versus gross floor area. And I will turn this over to Attorney Ladwig, who's here with us.
Go ahead, Ted.
I hope I'm on.
You're on.
Well, I've submitted a brief, Mr. Chairman, in support that we posted for your review, so I'll spare you the reading of it. It could be titled "The Law Meets Common Sense." It can also be subtitled "Legislative Capacity of the Commission Versus the Administrative or Quasi-Judicial Review Discretion of the Planning and Zoning Commission." It took me a long time, I want to say it took me 10 years, to figure out the distinction between the quasi-legislative discretion and the quasi-administrative discretion, and I'm going to try to summarize that in about five minutes. When the commission enacts or amends regulations establishing both requirements and drawing good boundaries, it is acting legislatively. That is, deciding what is best land use regulations for the town. The discretion is very broad. You can require 5,000 square feet, 10,000 square feet, 40,000 square feet, 120,000 square feet, or 130,000 square feet. It's up to you as to what you choose. And you can determine what uses are allowed in each zone, and the courts will uphold your decisions. When you review site plans, subdivision plans, zoning permit applications, your discretion is limited to determining whether the application is, as submitted, conforms to the existing regulations. For example, if the regulations require 40,000 square feet, you cannot say that our, we interpret that to a one-acre zone, and we require 43,560 square feet, and you don't do that. You interpret 40,000 square feet to be 40,000 square feet. If you got it, you get your permit. In December of 2018, the commission, in section 7.1.1, the commission removed the requirement that the structure be 35 years old, not changed that the total, the quote "total area," unquote, to gross floor area, unquote. You left the language in the regulation that the total area of the structure be 2,000 square feet. Staff maintains that the lack of change in this language indicates that the gross floor area interpretation should continue to be followed. I disagree. If the commission wanted gross floor area to be the measure, it could have included that language in 2018, but it did not. Staff contends that if the commission agrees that the total means the total, only a limited number of properties would be affected. If the commission wants to limit the number to one, it could do that too. You should allow this permit to issue to Mr. Charles Koka. And if you want to change 7.1.1 to be gross floor area of 2,000 square feet, you can do that. Nobody will challenge that, you know, that decision. I left out of my brief the Merriam-Webster dictionary definition of "total," which I should have included, which is, quote, "comprising or constituting a whole, entire, complete, or comprehensive." It does not mean something less than total. Total does not require interpretation. It has a definition. Its statutory interpretation of words used must be given their normal meaning, usage, and definition. When you were sworn in as commission members, you became land use permissioners. You swore to faithfully execute your duties according to law. None what seems good at the time are acting as judges interpreting a statute. The regulations, the zoning regulations, are a statute as it affects the town of Stonington. If you authorize the ZEO to continue to interpret "total" to mean gross floor area, Mr. Koka has two choices. Live in a town where words do not have their normal English meaning. And it has been suggested to Mr. Koka that what he should do is add square footage to his property to bring the gross floor area up to 2,000 square feet of gross floor area. That would cost him somewhere between $50,000 and $100,000 at 200 per square foot. Or he could, at additional cost and delay, seek further review by the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Superior Court, where a trained jurist will determine whether the total means total or something less than total. Tonight, I ask you, in exercising your quasi-judicial discretion, you make the appropriate and correct decision and authorize 200 square feet. The ZEO issued the requested permit because the town tax assessor finds that the property in question has a total area of 2,071 square feet, and a licensed architect, Peter Springsteen, licensed in the state of Connecticut, also finds that the property contains a total area of 2,071 square feet as indicated in the zoning permit application. That's my five-minute summary of the difference between a legislative discretion and an administrative or quasi-judicial discretion. And I ask that you instruct the zoning enforcement office, because Mr. Koka has property that meets the requirements of section 7.1.1, which is a total area of 2,000 square feet. Any questions at this time?
Any questions?
Ted, this is Fred Dykman. So the 2,000 square feet plus includes the basement, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And isn't it kind of unusual to be counting the basement as... Well, I don't know. I guess it's total square feet certainly, but certainly not living area.
Well, I'm not, Mr. Dykman, I'm not sure whether that's true or not. And I don't really have to be sure whether that's true or not, because in my argument, "total" means "total." It doesn't mean gross living area. It doesn't mean the area, you know, under seven, six feet headroom or seven feet headroom. "Total" means "total" because that's what the regulation says it means. Total.
I hear you. So where is the unit going to be constructed?
On the second floor.
On the second floor. You have 1,500, well, 1,400 square feet of living area, and you're going to make some portion of that a second unit.
It's going to be, funny, I don't have the application in front of me right this minute, but it's going to be less than 33% of the total area, about 560 square feet in the accessory apartment.
Giving you a primary residence of 800 square feet and change.
No, primary residence of about 1,500 square feet.
It includes basement.
Well, you've only got 1,500 square feet of living area in the structure. So you're going to end up with a 560-square-foot unit, and you're going to end up with an 800-square-foot unit. Correct?
I'll defer to your mathematics.
All right. Don't hold me to the decision, but you're getting, you're ending up with two very small living areas. Okay.
But we meet the requirements of section 7.1.1, all of the requirements. The accessory structure will be 33% of the total area. We have over 2,000 square feet of total area. All of the other bulk requirements are met. I maintain that we're entitled to our permit. If you want to change it, you have the discretion to do that. My argument is you just can't do that tonight. If you want, if going forward, if you want the accessory apartments to have structures to have 2,000 feet of gross floor area, you can do that. A simple text change will do that, if that's what you want to do. Again, I maintained in my brief that when you made the change in 2018, you liberalized the requirement. You removed the requirement that the structure be over 35 years of age. That made more structures available for having accessory apartments. It had indicated that you wanted to liberalize that in the interpretation of section 7.1.1. It doesn't seem rational or sensible or common sense to me that you want to restrict that amount, that availability, by restricting the total area to gross floor area, which again goes against common sense and Merriam-Webster dictionary definition.
So, this is Keith Brynes. So the town has consistently interpreted this regulation as gross floor area. So when the regulation was amended in 2008, we just kept that same language in there from decades previous, adding consistency to it. So, I mean, it's our department's opinion that the interpretation should continue to be gross floor area. You know, that is how we measure area in the regulations, probably in other cases where it doesn't specifically use the term gross floor area. And it really is the only definition we go by. There is no other definition of total area. You know, that's why it's before he adds an interpretation. So if you interpret that it should be gross floor area, the zoning official would have to deny the application for the zoning permit. It could be appealed to the Zoning Board of Appeals, who would then take on this question anew.
And then to the report.
Then go from there.
So Keith, was this just an oversight? That it wasn't, that we didn't specify gross floor area ratio in the first place?
Well...
I mean, it seems a pretty, I mean, I have to, I have to say, Mr. Ladwig has a pretty strong argument. But, you know, how did we end up here?
It was basically just not changing certain sections that we felt didn't need to be changed. You know, we may change it to that section, but just in effort to not upset the apple cart, leave certain sections alone.
Can I ask you a question?
So Fred, this is Lynn. I was part of those discussions, and I have to agree with Keith's stand on this, his opinion. You know, the town of Stonington, in its regulations, this is how they interpret, you know, square footage. Maybe we need to, you know, I think we would be opening up a can of worms to make an exception in this almost like spot zoning. I think that there have been a number of times when this has been the definition that was used in the town, and I personally don't think that, you know, this particular property has the minimum square footage that the regulation is calling for.
I agree with you, Lynn, and in the... But the language is the language.
But I think if you looked at the overall planning and zoning regulate, you know, and how we as a town write our zoning, right, this fits into that definition.
Are there other examples of this in the regs, Keith? Are there other places where we don't distinguish between or distinguish properly between gross floor area and total?
I'm not sure offhand.
Well, you define gross floor area in the definitions.
Yeah.
You don't define total area because it doesn't need to be defined. Keith, can I ask you a question too? It seems to me that when you did have, when you did have the requirement in section 1, that the structure be over 35 years old, you were dealing with some old, large structure. This may or may not have been an issue. If you had a very large, you know, structure that, you know, that can't be used as a single family house anymore, better used with an accessory apartment. This issue of the total area versus the gross floor area may never have raised as an issue because it wasn't an issue. You know, when you remove that, you know, opening, you know, the other structure for the possibility of accessory apartments, removing, you know, the old, 5-year-old house that couldn't be used as a single houses, household, family houses anymore, this now becomes a live issue. What's the definition? Definition, you know, as far as total does not... Gross floor area is defined, is used in other contexts. When you want to, when you want to know what gross floor area is, look at the definition, and you can find out what the gross floor area is.
Can I interrupt the one just one second? Could everybody put their mics on mute that are not talking? It's very difficult to hear Attorney Ladwig.
I have unmuted my mic at this point, I hope. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you a lot better. Thank you.
Like I say, this is, you know, this isn't going to upset the balance of the town. If you want it to be gross floor area, but if you want to comply with, you know, with the law, and that's my job. My job is to point out what the law is. You can't make up as you go along. Gross floor area has a definition. Total has a definition. If you want to limit the number of, you know, the number of accessory apartments, you can do that. All you got to do is amend section 7.1.1 and say "total" is no longer "total," it's gross floor area. But, you know, let's not live in Alice in Wonderland here where "total" doesn't mean "total." I tried not to get, you know, hyperbolic in my brief, but that's just Alice in Wonderland. "Total" doesn't mean "total."
Keith, how quickly can we change this?
Well, if we changed it, if we submitted a regulation amendment, I guess this week, there could be a public hearing sometime in the early fall.
But you have to give Mr. Koka his permit.
I disagree. I don't think we have to give Mr. Koka his permit at all. I think that, you know, as you said, there is no, you're making this assumption here that there's a difference between total and gross floor, and we're saying, no, that's never been the way that our regulations have been administered, and that, you know, that's a false assumption.
Well, I'm not assuming that you did not do that. You know, Keith and Candy have told me, yes, that's the way we have interpreted this in the past. What I'm saying is to interpret the word "total" to mean something other than "total" is inconsistent with expression of the board when an application is presented. If you want it to be gross floor area, you can make that area. You can't stand the word, the English language in its head and say "total" means gross floor area because it's something. Look it up in the dictionary. It doesn't say gross floor area. It says "complete," "comprehensive," "the whole." That's what "total" means. That's what total means. I know what you've been, I know what you've been interpreting in the past, but that interpretation does not stand a legal test. Nobody tested it before to that. How can you, how can you say total doesn't mean the whole thing? Say total is less than the whole. That's just contrary, contrary to statutory construction. That's not the law in Connecticut. I hope you'll agree because I hope Mr. Koka doesn't have to test this and find out what, you know, whether the law in Connecticut, you know, total means something less than total. I hope it doesn't.
Anyone else have any comments?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I said, well, if anyone else has any comments or questions of the board. Ben?
This is Ben. I'm just curious, again, what Fred was referring to Keith, of how many other instances this pops up? Do we have a cross-threaded wordage in one situation? Do we know?
I don't know. I'd have to see and do a search for the words, uh, total area and see how often that comes up.
Yeah. Has the zoning enforcement officer been challenged on this before with other permits? I mean, historically, you said you've always gone with gross and that's what I've understood it today as well.
Never to the level of it going to the commission for an interpretation like this. So, you know, we've been asked over the years and, you know, it's, there's a consistency to how we've looked at it as gross floor area, but it's never gone before a commission like this.
Keith, how many years?
Well, the original accessory apartment regulation looks like it was written in 1991. So, it looks like going back to then, although I obviously can't say with 100% certainty going back then.
What is the view of the commission?
I'm, I'm wondering if we can't, um, rule against this application, which would kick it over to the zoning board of appeals and set about fixing the language in the meantime.
I would say add clarity to the language. I wouldn't say fixing.
Mr. Dyson, with all, with all due, with all due respect, I think that is grossly unfit with Charles Koka. If you want to change the language to make it clear that what you want is gross floor area, is grossly unfair to one property owner in town in Stonington, have to go through the process of an application to appeal to the zoning board of appeals, which historically upheld the zoning enforcement. Then go to the superior court to get a trained jurist to decide whether total means total. That is grossly unfair to Mr. Koka. If you want going forward, if you want going forward, the language to be gross floor area, you can do that, but you should not punish one property owner financially, uh, to the extent of making him go through the process when you're in essence recognizing that there's a problem with the language in your zoning regulations. It's just unfair to come down on one property owner. You want to fix it? You can fix it. As Keith said, you can file that, you know, that amendment so that it comes up in, you know, in less than a month. But not, you should not penalize Mr. Koka and make him go through the process of getting an interpretation from either the zoning board of appeals or the superior court to fix this for him, for that one property. That's grossly unfair. If you want to, if you want to fix the language, clarify the language, call it whatever you want.
Excuse me, excuse me, Attorney Ludwig, would your client consider us tabling this for a month while we review it and have a public hearing with new wordage, correct, cleaned up wordage? That way he doesn't under, he's not under any penalty for any more further expenditure. We're just tabling it till a future date.
The application was filed under the, under the existing regulations. He is entitled to add into his permit to be viewed under the regulations that existed at the time he filed. If you want to change it going forward, you have all the discretion in the world to do that. Nobody can challenge that discretion.
So, first of all thing, this language has been in place, as Keith said, since 1991. The department has consistently interpreted this and answered the question for other residents and property owners in the town of Stonington. I say that your argument of punishing this one person is, is ridiculous. It's the exact opposite. For the last 20 some odd years, every person that asked the question and got the exact same answer, um, would be, would be, in your words, punished, which I think is ridiculous. So, I, I'm sorry. I, I don't think that there's, if, if he wants to take it to the ZVA, then that's fine. But I don't think in any way, shape or form that this, this, I, you know, the planning and zoning, uh, should, should be approving this.
People, those people that made the applications under the language as they, as that, uh, that zoning regulation was written, for the last 20 or 30 years, if it was 1991, they're not before you tonight. And what I, what I maintain was that those, those buildings were probably larger in, in, just because they were older. And that's, those are those, those older, larger buildings were probably, you know, distinction between total and gross floor area. But you shouldn't perpetuate.
But you have no, you have no reason to say that. So, I mean, really, you're, you're making a bunch of assumptions now.
You're right, Ms. Donnelly, I can't know that. But all I know is that when you, when you say total is less than total, that was a mistake the first time you did it, the second time you did it, and every other time you did it, it was a mistake and you take going forward. And if you want to change the language, you can change the language, but you should not make Mr. Koka go through the time and expense. And yet, it, it's a punishing time and expense, you know, to correct the misinterpretation that has been perpetuated for the last almost 30 years.
I think, I think maybe we should table this and have our attorney, town attorney, give us his opinion on this. And then we can go on to it the next meeting. I don't think, maybe we can't make a decision tonight, the right decision tonight.
I'd be more than happy to have another lawyer look at this.
I think that's what we.
We can do that.
Have our, have our Morgan look at it and get back to us in September. Not having another meeting in August, it's been canceled in September. Everyone agree on that?
Yes, Mr. Chair, it's a good idea.
In the meantime, in the meantime, I think, um, the planning and zoning office should, uh, do a little research as to, uh, how many times this appears in our zoning. And I do think that, uh, we should, uh, add clarity, um, and have, and have a discussion at the next meeting, um, as to what the wording would be if we decided clarity was needed so that that could happen quickly if needed.
I agree with Lynn. This is, this is, we're here because of sloppy drafting and, you know, we need to fix it and we need to find out where else we have a problem like this.
As we continue to the next meeting.
Okay.
You have anything?
We can do that. Moving on to the next item here, item 4D.
I'm going to try to get out of this meeting. I hope it works. I'm, I'm technically challenged, but I'm going to try it out of this meeting. I see an X on my screen. I hope I disappear.
Okay. Thank you.
Item 5D for 2188ZON Ralph Arganese M. Klein, zoning permit application for placement of a 56 by 11.75 foot office trailer for the school bus depot. Property located at 50 Extrusion Drive, assessors map 36, block four, lot 2A, zone M1. Um, this application, it's, um, the trailer used for the school bus depot. Um, it's used because of the very poor condition of the main building. Conforms to the requirements of the M1 zone. Uh, we received comments from the fire district recommending locating the, the trailer at least 24 feet away from the building. Although the 50 foot front sat back must still be met and there's, there's room enough for that to be accommodated. So, really just a recommended stipulation is that the trailer should, uh, trailer shall be a minimum of 24 feet from the, from the building. No other zoning issues with this one.
It's not a flood zone back in there with that wetland?
Um, I don't think it is there.
Just away, okay.
You know, it's some areas around there it is.
Right. I'm in favor of this.
Is there, Keith, is there a time limitation since the reason for this is the poor condition of the existing building? Like, is there a time limitation to let them fix the existing building?
Well, I'm trying to see if their application mentioned a time, which I don't think it does. I mean, the board of education has always been looking at different options for the school bus depot, going as far as having, uh, having one permitted by the commission a few years ago that wasn't constructed. So, I don't think this, you know, the status quo can go on forever there, but I'm not sure how long it will need to be there.
Right. So, I guess, I guess my question is, should we put a time? Because I, I mean, do we, I think if we say it's okay, then it's okay forever unless it's specified, correct?
Yeah, that might not be a bad idea, you know, maybe to say it's, uh, valid for two years and, uh, then would have to just come back for, for a repeat of this application.
I mean, uh, cause otherwise it just seems like a, you know, the whole rationale for the trailer and justification of the trailer, it, it's null and void. It's like, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Right. It's almost like, you know, a small permanent building in front of the other building.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think it might be a good idea.
That is a good idea. Who owns that building now? The board of ed or the town or?
No, it's owned by a private property owner Ralph Arganese.
Okay.
Keith, this is Michael Klein with First Student. Uh, I believe Vicky, our location manager, is also on the line here. Um, and, and I'm not 100% sure when our contract with the school district runs through, but I, I believe in discussions with Vicky that, uh, you are correct that, that the school district has been looking for a place to put this bus depot for, for many years. I believe for over 10 years now. And for some reasons, uh, here and over there, uh, it, it, it never seems to come together. But Vicky, can you confirm when our, our contract runs through at this particular instance?
Hi, Vicky Matthew, First Student. Um, are you talking about the lease for the, the property or?
No, I'm talking about the school district contract.
Oh, we, we just signed, we're in the second year of a five-year contract.
So, we, we would ask the, we would ask the board for a, a, a three-year approval on this. So, when is our contract up? If it's second year in, in, in a five-year, would that be 2023?
That sounds about right. I have the RFP in the, in, in my car. I don't have it in front of me, but that sounds correct.
So, we would, go ahead.
Uh, we could make the, uh, the time limit coincident with the termination, the termination of that contract. And that would give you three years or so to, and the town three years or so to get their ducks in a row for the next go-around.
Hopefully, and, and, and that's correct. And at that point in time, if we were to win the contract again, three years from now and, and get an extension, then we would be forced, obviously, if, if we're not any closer to a new location with the school district, we would be forced to come back before the board here and, and, and I guess request another extension onto this, onto this use.
So, so we could approve this with, uh, with leaving the date, uh, to coincide with whatever the current contract date is to be filled in by Keith later. Does that work for everybody?
I just, I want to be really careful here Fred, because of our last conversation. Um, so I, and I don't know how this works, but do you end the contract and establish a new contract? Or do you just extend the existing contract? Because that would make a difference on how you wrote this up.
Well, uh, I think we would be, have to be careful to say that this permit would expire at the termination date of the current contract regardless of any provision for extensions and rollovers or whatever the language is, so that, so that we don't get into a perpetual renewal. I understand your point.
Yeah, yeah. So, as long as it's worded, you did a good job there. So, that, that kind of makes sense to me.
We would, we would agree with that as well and accept those conditions.
Keith, you can, you can make that happen now?
I have a motion on.
Make, uh, I'll make a motion, uh, to approve the application with a time limit that coincides with the current, uh, time limit on the contract that the, that the, uh, bus depot operates under. That obviously needs to be cleaned up.
Second?
I second it.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, board.
4D5, uh, PZ2007SUP Extrusion Drive LLC, Sergio Chorenzia, request for minor changes to approve specialty use permit application for the construction of too many warehouse storage facilities with associated parking, landscaping and drainage. Property located at 30 and 40 Extrusion Drive, Parketuck, assessors map 36, block four, lots 2D and 2E. As you know, this, um, this application for these self-storage units, um, was recently approved by the commission, um, on the June 30th meeting. So, these are very minor modifications to the building size that are basically required because of the manufacturer's specifications. Um, the depth of building one is decreasing by two feet. So, that building's getting smaller by 320 square feet. The depth of building two is increasing by five feet. So, it's getting 800 square feet bigger. Um, the combined area of the two buildings is increasing by 480 square feet. Altogether, it's about 1.5% of what was approved. Um, the revisions are basically imperceptible when you're looking at the entire site plan and any stormwater. and any stormwater impacts are negligible. Uh, it still conforms to the requirements of the M one zone, but otherwise conforms to all the, um, the commission's approval from last time. But the owner and engineer are here if there's any questions on this.
Not hearing none. Uh, make your motion on this.
Most approve the modifications as.
Second.
Need more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just have it.
And, um, under old business, there's, uh, item six B, PZ two oh one four BR by B V S Stonington Development LLC, Reed Co. Uh, this is a bond release application for work performed under PZ eighteen seventeen S D SUP and G P P for People's United Bank, uh, for construction of the medical office building, the Hartford Healthcare Building at three fifty Liberty Street Pawtucket, assessors map seventeen, block one, lot thirteen, zones C S five and R M twenty. As you know, this building was completed, uh, a year ago, um, for the Hartford Healthcare Building there. Um, the commission had a stipulation that they had to submit an erosion and sedimentation control bond, which ended up being seventy-four thousand dollars and seven, seventy-four thousand, seven hundred dollars. Um, there were no issues with erosion and sedimentation control. There are still no issues there. They did a good job constructing the site. Uh, we got positive comments back from the zoning official in Pawtucket Fire District on this, and our recommendation is the full release of the bond. And, um, I believe one of the representatives is, is here if there's any questions.
Make a motion to release the bond.
Do you have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I just have it.
And, uh, that is all the agenda items for tonight.
Colleen, you have anything to say? I see she's on. Colleen, you have anything?
Keith, is Mason's Island being tabled?
Yes.
Yes, that is, that is being tabled. They're in the process of applying for a special use permit that would accompany that application.
I guess I missed that. Okay, perfect, thank you.
All right, so, so, uh, second meeting month, and the next meeting will be the first, the first Tuesday, September.
Second day, please.
I missed that, David. Could you repeat that, please?
Next meeting is the first meeting, uh, first, first Tuesday of September.
Okay.
Nothing in August, you're saying, nothing.
Nothing in August. Take a vacation, go to Europe, I don't know.
Yeah, right.
I'm in America, they won't let me in.
Go to Rhode Island for a few hours.
There we go.
The first Tuesday will be the first of September.
Right, that's the first of September.
Okay.
Removed.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Bye, everyone.
Bye, everyone.